Good morning. The Board of Appeal for Tuesday, October 29th is now in session. Just to remind, please make sure your phones are off and if you have any conversations, take them outside of the room. In performance with the open meeting law, this meeting is being live streamed. So, we have a five-member board today. If you have a case before us, you need each and every one of us to vote in favor of the project. You can, if you'd like, request an administrative deferral and we will hear you on a different date, on a later date. You will be informed of that date today. Let's see, and if you're here to speak and support or in opposition to a project, put your name and address on the record and basically base your testimony on the violations that are before you. And just a reminder to everybody here that comments from the audience, from neighborhoods, from the elected officials, from the BPDA are all advisory to the board. So while you're here as an applicant or speaking as a resident, please make sure you use your time wisely to give us new information and not repeat what somebody else has said. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. The first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of September 10th, 2019, and September 17th of 2019. We need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the first extension, calling BOA 723-43720, Seaver Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Paul Minahan, 12 Washington Street, Mass. With me is Mr. Leroy Alexander.
Eighty-three Howland Street, Roxbury, Mass.
So tell us why you're requesting an extension?
Good morning, Madam Chairman. We are seeking a six-month extension. Right now, things are in with Mr. Luis Santana is reviewing it and there have been certain things that have had to be tweaked and we're working our way through it and we're requesting a six-month extension.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to extend.
Can we give him a one-year, just in the event?
One-year extension.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you so much.
Calling next extension, calling BOA 505-714-15 Commonwealth Avenue. Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Attorney Eugene Kelly, 223 Commonwealth Avenue, Boston. This is a renovation of an extensive renovation of an 1866 townhouse and the townhouse has been purchased. It's been built as a single, it's a double townhouse in the first block of Commonwealth Avenue that had been built as a single-family home and then, you know, in the 20s, 30s it had passed into institutional use. And more recently, my client bought it and has been restored the exterior back to its original 1866 condition, which took a lot of time and a lot of effort. And that, and they're continuing to work on the interior of the building and so we're, and what this decision involved was the height of the garden wall along the alley, which were by right, we can do six feet and we were asking for more and so that's what we were given, the board approved. There's not, and it's conditioned on review and approval by the Back Bay Architectural Commission. So, you know, we still have more to go, but I cannot go to the Back Bay Architectural Commission until, if the, without having the zoning in place.
Okay, may I have a motion, please, for a one-year extension?
Motion to extend for one year.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Calling next extension, calling BOA 759-563-80 Marginal Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Attorney Laureen Scatino, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. I'm here today requesting an extension of 80 Marginal Street. We're in the process of completing the construction drawings with the BPDA and anticipate filing with inspectional services by the winter.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to extend for a year.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 712-280-47 to 55 La Graine Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Attorney Jared Eigerman, 171 High Street, Newport, Mass. Good morning. We've actually already started using the zoning relief, digging holes, doing excavation, encountered some problems. There's a vault that a butter has that's encroaching, so we're just worried that construction may start and stop, so that's why we came in for the extension, just in case.
May I have a motion, please?
When does the current permit expire?
It would expire November 10th, but we already, we got permits in July and also last week, so we have, we have permits.
Okay. Motion to extend for a year.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the last case for extension, calling BOA 544-302-22 Hendry Street. Is Hendry Street here?
Yes.
Oh, okay, here we go. Name and address for the record, please.
Georgina Alfonseca, 22 Hendry Street, Dorchester, 02122.
Tell us why you're here.
I'm requesting an extension on a permit for use of land for a driveway for two vehicles. I request, I've been in this process for like about three years now, being back and forth.
Just for two parking spaces?
Between ISD and DPW. You need this, you need that, I keep coming back and forth and now finally got everything together. ISD says that my permit has expired and I have to start the process all over.
May I have a motion?
Well, when, I'm sorry, when did the permit expire?
It expired on November 1st, 2018.
Given the extenuating circumstance of being shuttled back and forth.
Okay, I make a motion to extend for a year.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
From, from the date of the expiration, here in the original date.
We should then give her two years then, because that's around the corner.
Yes.
Okay?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Getting done, okay? Thank you.
I'm gonna call the 9:30 hearing.
Hold on. There, I've noticed that there are new people who've entered the room since we started this meeting. This is a five-member board and whenever we do have a five-member board, you need all board members in support of your project. If anybody is not in support, the project is then denied. So you are welcome to request an administrative deferral if you so desire. Go ahead, Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna call the 9:30 hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30? Counselor address, please.
8894 Lincoln Street.
For the record, calling BOA 919043, 88 to 94 Lincoln Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mike Ross from the law firm of Prince Lobel, representing the applicant, requesting an administrative deferral based on the five member today.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
A second, that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
Hold on, Madam Chair, I'm just trying to get to the dates here.
I don't know if 12/17 is available.
We do. We have December 17th at 11:30.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30? Hearing none, I'll call the first case, calling BOA 995-699-273 Highland Street. This is new construction of a four-story plus lower-level garage apartment building with 23 family units under the City of Boston's Energy Positive Housing Program. Also combined seven existing lots into one lot to be known as 273 Highland Street. It's a violation of Article 50, Section 28. The use of a multifamily dwelling is forbidden. Article 50, Section 28, the use of accessory parking is forbidden. Article 50, Section 29, the lot area of additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, the building height is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, the building height number of stories is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the front yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking design and maneuverability. Article 50, Section 43, off-street loading is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 44, conformity with an existing building alignment. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott, Quilty Miller, 28 State Street, Boston. With me to my immediate left is John Razinsky from Rees-Lark and Development. The appellant on the project to my far left is Sylvia Mihich from Studio G Architects in Jamaica Plain. We passed out some presentation materials to the board today for your review, including project plans, a memo of zoning compliance and project overview, the BPDA Article 80 Small Project Review Approval Board Memo. This was approved by the board in September, as well as the record of public support during that public comment period. This is frankly a really cool and interesting project. It is a project site of a little over 16,000 square feet of vacant land. It's seven parcels that is, will be combined into one parcel. It's a DND city-owned land on Highland Street in Roxbury. Unique topographical grade change of about 14 feet from the front of the site to the rear of the site. There's also about 10 feet from the, from one side to the other, so it is kind of a unique, uniquely located and positioned property site. And the development takes that into account and also necessitates some of the zoning relief before the board today. The property is located between Highland Park and Jackson Square. It's a short walk to the Jackson Square Orange Line Station. As far as the specific project is concerned, what is proposed is a new four-story residential building, 23 mixed-income rental units, which actually will be set up as a limited equity cooperative. The unit mix is four one-bedrooms, 15 two-bedrooms, and four three-bedrooms. You'll note, no studios, as well as semi-below-grade garage parking for 19 spaces, just below a one-to-one parking ratio, as well as community art workspace and gallery space of about 900 square feet on the ground floor as a community-facing benefit. It's an appropriately-designed building for the neighborhood and for the area. There also will be related improvements in landscaping, site design, pedestrian access, including helping get access all the way up the hill to, to the top for Highland Park as part of the RFP with DND.
What are the sizes, the average sizes of the units?
So the average size is the one beds are a little over 600 square feet. The 15 two beds are between 864 and 883 square feet. And the four three beds are a little over 1,100 square feet.
How many of these units are affordable?
So, as part of the DND requirement and part of the project, we're actually proposing both broader and deeper affordability than what's required by the IDP. So 15 of the 23 units will actually be designated as affordable, including three of them at 30% AMI, seven of the, of the units at 60% AMI, and five of the units at 100% AMI, with the remaining units, eight units as market rate. So we're proposing, I mean typically rental units are at 70% AMI, as the board knows. We're proposing 10 of the units to be below that and another five to be at 100% AMI. And I also would be remiss to not mention that this will be part of the city's E-plus green building program. The building will be a high-performance, energy-positive building that will actually produce more energy than it consumes and will give back to the, to the grid. It will be designed to passive house standards as well, and it also will achieve LEED Platinum certification.
And this, this street is a one-way street coming down the hill, right? Okay. So what, what are the street improvements that you're talking about?
So, in terms of, again, it's, it's a vacant parcel of land, so additional street lighting, street, I think we're also widening the sidewalks to a certain degree. I don't know if John has anything else.
And the street trees and those kind of amenities, okay? So tell us about the violations.
Absolutely. So as Mr. Secretary mentioned, there are violations for the project. We would suggest that they are required to provide such a robust, robust affordability component, as well as the unique topographical grade changes. Two of them are related to the use, so the multifamily residential use and the access, it's a 3F4,000, Madam Secretary. We would also suggest that these individual parcels on their own are not given to having three-family buildings on them because of the topography, but also because of the size of them. So we need a variance for the multifamily use, also the accessory parking to that multifamily use we were cited for as well. Minimum lot area per dwelling is 2,000 square feet and we are at 711 square feet per unit. Maximum floor area ratio is .8 and we are at 1.75. This is all in our Tab 2, it's in the middle of Tab 2, we itemize all of these for the board's edification if they'd like to follow along. As far as maximum building height, it's 35 feet in three stories. We are proposing 49 feet in four stories. Again, because the topographical grade change from the front to the rear, a little that is, it's a little more hidden than you would be a 49-foot building on a flat, a flat lot as the, you know, the hill keeps going up behind the property. We need relief for both the height in foot and feet, as well as the height in stories. Minimum front yard is 20 feet, we're at 15 feet, substantial conformance with the front yard requirement. The minimum rear yard requirement is 30 feet and we're at a little, a little under 19 feet. So that's, 30 feet's what's required and 19 feet is, a little under 19 feet is what's proposed. Minimum usable open space, 650 square feet per dwelling unit. We are proposing 285 square feet per dwelling unit. We also need relief for the parking spaces, the maneuverability based on the size of some of the spaces, as well as off-street loading. There's not a dedicated loading bay for these 23 units, but all loading will be handled inside, in the semi-below-grade parking structure.
So moving vehicles can, can be accommodated off-site?
Yes.
On, on, on the site?
On the site. Correct.
So there'll be no issues with street traffic?
There should not be.
Okay.
And the gallery space is not meant to be large pieces, I don't believe, so we wouldn't have any issues with that. There's no retail component, so no.
Is there roof deck?
Uh, no.
No?
No.
So tell us about the gallery. Is it, is it purely gallery or is it artist's live work or is it production? What is it?
Yeah, go ahead.
It will not be artist's live work. It'll be a gallery, open to the community. We intend to have community entities help manage and decide who shows there, but it's definitely not artist's workspace.
It's positioned, yeah, it's positioned, there's no live-work units proposed, but it is positioned in a way to be facing Highland Street in a very visible corner, as you can see from the renderings. So it's meant to be more of a community benefit, activate the street, than it is a benefit for the residents of, of the building. Now, of course, if there are artists in the building, I'm sure they'll be able to have their, their art exhibited, but it's not meant to be just for the building.
It's a 3F4,000, so that should have been cited as a conditional or a forbidden use, right?
We were not cited for that by ISD. In discussions with them, we, it was looked at as not a, as a citable use. I believe maybe because it was accessory to the building. Again, I think it's, it's, it's meant to be not only for the building, but also for, so I think there was a little bit of a gray area there, but we were not cited for it.
Okay. Any questions? How the files are still on?
Oh, the drawing's nice. Yeah, I have a few questions. It's a vacant lot now, right? Or these multiple lots?
Yes, sir.
Was there ever anything on it? What was on it?
Triple deckers.
Our information is that it was a, it was residential, probably triple-deckers.
And how long, how long has it been vacant?
I think 60s and 70s is when they came down.
Pardon me?
50 years.
Six, yeah, 50 years.
Been vacant for at least 50 years.
Having renewed.
Yeah, okay. The open, will the management of the art space be the same as the management of the residential units?
Yes.
Okay, so how, how will the exhibits be selected?
We don't have a protocol for that, but I'm guessing it will, it'll be, yeah.
Just curious.
To be determined, yeah, to be determined.
Yeah, we haven't come to that point. We'll work with the community, DND as well, to come up with that.
The contractor been selected for the project?
No.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Do you anticipate having events at the gallery?
Yes.
You do?
Yeah, we do, because the events will be around what's showing, but rather than have people streaming in at all times of the day, we anticipate that the gallery will be used more on an event basis than an, it's not gonna be open 12 hours a day, frankly. It's gonna be for events, that's really what it's gonna be.
Is it for residents, community?
Yes, yes, yeah. It's, we, it won't, it, there's no way to staff it so that it's open all, all the time. That's just not the intention, yeah.
We could, we can discuss with ISD as to that, why, why or why not we weren't cited for that use and we can understand that.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hold on. After the representatives of elected officials, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. During the community process, there was a lot of positive feedback regarding the project. The community process was performed by the Department of Neighborhood Development and the petitioners are, also received support from the Highland Park Neighborhood Coalition. We'd like to go on record to support the project.
Hi, Brandon Russell, I'm in support, I'm sorry, Brandon Russell, on behalf of the Office of Boston City Council, Kim Janney. We stand in support of this project. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Counselor Sabi George's office. We'd like to support this project. Thank you.
Good morning, John Foyerbach, Senior Development Officer, Department of Neighborhood Development. A DND supports it as it was outlined in the presentation. The development includes seven City of Boston parcels. DND working very closely with the BPDA and neighborhood residents put out a request for proposal. They will respond in. So we're also including city funds, but it's fully supported by a DND as well as the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of board. John Delzell, Senior Architect with the Boston Planning and Development Agency. I just echo our support for the project and point out that it is the result of an extensive community planning process, both in terms of selecting the site as an E-plus green building program site, but also determining the program, the residential units, the artists, community event space. We're all part of a community planning process. And I also want to mention that the development team is committed to including a public passageway that'll connect from the lower portion of Highland Street to Marcellus Street that is above that site. There's an additional development parcel, not part of this team, that is in the E-plus green building program that'll provide the connecting pathway, as well as sites across the street that'll continue this urban connection up to the top of Highland Park. There's a wonderful urban connection component to the program. Thank you very much.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second.
I'd like to make a request of the BPDA. We are seeing a lot of projects that are pretty much boxes that are, you know, in some ways not at all reflective of the community. So if there could be a more detailed look at the design to ensure that it's unique, but it's also picks up some of the character of that historic neighborhood district. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
A motion carries. You're all set for that proviso.
Thank you. Case, calling BOA 983-442-7 Wambach Street. Are both cases combined, Counselor? Are both cases combined or they're two separate?
They're separate parcels, they're located.
Okay, we'll do one at a time. This is a reconfiguration of interior, changing from a two to three unit.
This is a reconfiguration of interior, changing from a two to three unit. The violation is Article fifty, Section twenty-nine. Lot area for additional dwelling unit is insufficient, and Article fifty, Section twenty-nine usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
John Lyons, an attorney with an office at eighty Copen Street, Quincy House.
Jean Barochin, manager, owner.
And do you want to put your address on the record, please?
Uh, address, uh, seven Wombach Street and eighty-seven Maple Street.
You're, okay. Ma'am is going to be speaking?
Natalie Zerman, uh, property manager.
So tell us what's being proposed.
This is a, um, simple interior reconfiguration of an existing two-family, uh, which is an extremely large building, in an attempt to make units that are more readily marketable and more in character with what is in, in the neighborhood.
So what are the proposed sizes of the units? Can you give us the breakdown by unit one, two, and three?
First of all, be converted from a two-bedroom apartment to a three-bedroom apartment of approximately one thousand seven hundred sixty-eight square feet. The second apartment currently occupies the second and third floors. It's a seven-bedroom, twenty-eight-hundred-square-foot unit. The new configuration creates two duplex units, each with three bedrooms and fourteen hundred thirty-five square feet.
It's fourteen thirty-five?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, is, is there going to be any changes in parking? Is any parking provided?
There will be parking provided, there'll be three units, uh, three spaces for the three units.
Right.
There was some concern expressed by the community that one of the spaces is located immediately adjacent to the building, and, um, the architect informed me that a fire-rated wall could be installed at that point.
So we can, we can address that with building code?
Correct.
How are the plans, Mr. Ollin?
Drawing's ready.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and we'd like to go on record to support the project. Uh, our office held in a Butters meeting on September seventh, and the group also met with the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood, uh, Association in October. Um, the group sent a conditional letter of support, uh, pending that they continue to work with them, uh, to make sure that, uh, they have nice landscaping, um, and work directly with the, uh, neighborhood, the community.
Not, not astroturf, right? Not astroturf?
No.
Because we see more and more of that, huh?
Hi, my name is Roy Thompson, I'm in the butter of seven Wombach Street. I'm also on the housing committee for the, for the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood, which covers with fourteen Wombach Street and eighty-seven Maple. We'd like to offer conditional support in that, if the housing historic, if the former home of, of Alma Lou, who was a, a Presidential Medal of Arts winner, it was a beautiful home, and so far, all, all exterior details have been stripped, it's been covered in like plain gray siding. And we would like the house to be renovated to a high quality. All the trees and landscape have been removed. We want it to be essentially done at a, at a high level of quality, and if we're going to make it from a two-family to a three-family, we want to make sure that the, the parking is made accommodating. So there'd be two off-street parking and one next, one next to the house. But really, we really care about the quality of the people he's elected live there, and the quality of the home, because this is a, the entire block is owner-occupied, single and multifamily, family homes, and the current state of the house looks like it's just rundown, low quality, and we don't want the design just for maximum profit, we want something that fits into the architectural style of the neighborhood, and something that actually adds or, or becomes a part of the neighborhood, and not something that's just there for profit essentially.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I?
Can I ask a question? The comments that were made by the previous speaker, uh, who's responsible for the poor condition of the house?
We agree completely with what was just said, and we understand, um, where he's coming from and how the neighbors feel about this. This is a magnificent house on a beautiful street. Um, the house was vacant, it's been old for two years, and some stopgap measures, um, have been employed. The house was covered with asbestos siding, which was removed illegally. All the lead on the inside and additional asbestos was also removed legally. The expectation here is that if this relief is granted, there will be BPDA design review, and the house will be restored to match what is on the street.
Thank you. Uh, may I have a motion, please? No, we're done. May I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, with BPDA design review with, uh, making sure that the, uh, the restoration is contextual and appropriate for the neighborhood, for the history of the home.
And no building code relief?
Is there any request?
Um, no, but, uh, given the parking and other things for that, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with those provisos.
Calling the next case, calling BOA nine eight three four four one eighty-seven Maple Street. This is a reconfiguration of rooms, changed the number of units from two to four. The violation is Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, insufficient additional lot area per unit. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, insufficient usable open space per unit, and Article fifty, Section forty-three, off-street parking and loading requirements. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is John Lyons, I'm an attorney with an office at eighty Copen Street in Quincy, representing the proponent.
Again, tell, uh, tell us what's being proposed.
This is a similar project to the one just mentioned, uh, the house being a little bit larger. This is a two-family home with two four-bedroom, two-thousand-square-foot apartments, which is proposed to be converted to a four-family home with four two-bedroom, one-thousand-square-foot apartments. All the work will be performed inside the current footprint. There is off-street parking provided under the proposal, partially-
How many spaces?
Four spaces, two of which would be compact spaces. Part of the parking, uh, the additional parking would be created by the removal of an existing garage, and the plan is to remove that, uh, concrete pad in the asphalt and install, install pervious pavement on the entire parking area, all of which is off-street.
So that is pervious, did you say pervious pavement?
Yes.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ollin?
Drawing's ready.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, we conducted in a Butters meeting on September seventh. Um, neighbors in passing were, uh, in support of the project. The home is very large, um, and so adding more units to the, uh, neighborhood, uh, was something that some of the, uh, neighbors were very supportive of. Um, they also met with the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association. There was concerns around the garage space, and if the plans were, um, accurate, however, uh, they, they'd also like to go on record to support. They sent a conditional letter, uh, pending BPDA review.
I'm with Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association Housing Committee, and we also offer conditional support, assuming that all the renovations and the restarting of the house is done in, in context with the other houses in the neighborhood.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Uh, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review, again, uh, with respect to context and matching the other homes in the neighborhood.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA nine eight six five one six, forty-three Withington Street. This is to construct a new four-story building with eight residential units and sixteen parking spaces. The violation is Article sixty-five, Section eight, forbidden use in a three-F six-thousand sub-district. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the building height is excessive in feet. And Article sixty-five, Section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
How you doing? Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Steve Suda, owner of forty-three Withington Street located in Dorchester, Massachusetts.
Are you going to be speaking?
Uh, I'm Eric Dakerson, uh, located at one Mudlow, I'm the architect for context.
Tell us what's being proposed?
Uh, we have a ten-thousand-square-foot lot with eight new residential units with sixteen parking spaces.
Okay, yes, I usually ask, what's the, what's the, uh, the bedroom count, and how many square feet per unit?
Yes, there are, uh, all eight units are two-bedroom units. Uh, the smallest one is nine hundred and sixty square feet. Uh, the six of them are around eleven hundred square feet, and the top-floor unit is thirteen hundred square feet.
Is there a roof deck proposed?
There, uh, there is a deck, uh, or two decks on the, uh, roof of the third floor, but not on the roof of the fourth floor.
And how is parking being accommodated?
There are sixteen spaces, uh, at the rear of the site.
And, and is that what the zoning requires?
Uh, I believe the zoning-
Zoning requires one and a half spots.
One and a half, and we're providing two per unit.
Okay, just give us a minute. So, um, is this, is this block part of your project?
It is, yes. Uh, during the neighborhood pro, process, uh, the neighbors were very concerned about a, a green space there at the, uh, end of Euclid Street, and they asked us to recess it and retain some of the greenery there, so we end up with about a fifteen-hundred-square-foot green area, uh, so part of our-
Did that trigger any additional violations?
It did not, because the units are still entered right off of, uh, Withington Street.
Okay. What are the plans, Mr. Ollin?
Uh, drawing's ready.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Whitney Celestin with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We had a very engaged Butters meeting for this project. It's also gone to the Community Improvement Association, and they were very excited about the home ownership component of this project. We'd like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Can you please tell us how parking is, is going to work? Cause I, I'm not sure I see a drawing where that shows the parking layout.
Uh, sheet eight-ten, uh, the second sheet in, shows a, a driveway off of Withington Street, uh, ten-foot wide, and then at the rear of the site, uh, it turns to a twenty-foot wide drive aisle with parking on either side.
Is there screening and buffering in the rear yard against your Butters?
Yes, uh, wood fence.
How are the plans, Mr. Ollin?
Drawing's ready.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Did I do that already?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry. Um, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, uh, approve BPDA design review.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I two 'em in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Calling the next two cases, calling BOA nine seven five three one eight, forty-one Wood Avenue. There is a companion case, BOA nine seven five three two three, forty-three to forty-five Wood Avenue. This is for forty-one. Combine three existing lots into one, subdivide into two lots. Lot A to be four thousand eight hundred square feet, and Lot B to be four thousand eight hundred square feet. Lot, Lot A and Lot B one, I'm sorry, B, the number forty-one Wood Avenue is a two-family structure to remain. The violation is Article nine, Section one, two-family in a one-family sub-district. Article sixty-nine, Section nine, insufficient lot size. Article sixty-nine, Section nine, excessive FAR. Article sixty-nine, Section nine, insufficient sideyard setback, and Article sixty-nine, Section nine, insufficient open space per unit. This is for forty-three, forty-five Wood Ave. This is to construct a new family dwelling on four thousand eight hundred square-foot lot for combining of lots and then subdivide to create new lot. The violation is Article sixty-nine, Section twenty-nine. Off-street parking and loading requirements for forty-three is tandem. Article sixty-nine, Section twenty-nine, off-street parking and loading for forty-three is insufficient parking. Article sixty-nine, Section nine, insufficient lot size, forty-three. Article sixty-nine, Section nine, excessive FAR, forty-three. Article sixty-nine, Section nine, insufficient rear yard setback, forty-three. Article sixty-nine, Section nine, insufficient front yard setback at forty-three. Article sixty-nine, Section nine, excessive FAR at forty-three. Article sixty-nine, Section nine, insufficient open space per unit at forty-three, and Article sixty-nine, Section eight, newly, the newly proposed two-family dwelling in a one-family sub-district at forty-three is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, this is Attorney Neil Kreitzer, Law Office, Neil Kreitzer, two sixty-eight Newbury Street, fourth floor, Boston, Mass, oh-two-one-one-six.
So tell us what's being proposed.
So this is a plan to build a, uh, two-family, uh, building in, at forty-three to forty-five Wood Avenue along with parking. Uh, there will be two parking spots. Each unit will be three-bed, one-bath, approximately twelve hundred square feet. Uh, it will be in the character of the neighborhood. Although it is zoned as a one-family area, all the surrounding units are in fact two-family, and there are many other two-family units on the same street.
So you haven't been before us much, um, so can you walk through the violations? Tell us what's required and what's being, what's being proposed? So the first one is the forbidden use on forty-three, forty-five. Um, can you talk through the FAR, et cetera? What's required and what you're proposing?
So, uh, the FAR is excessive. Basically, the unit, at one point, there was a, a two-family at that, at that place in character. All, all of the plots are roughly the same size. At this point, it isn't, uh, it is no longer standing, and we're, we're building a similar, similar, uh, area in the FAR requirements, uh, of the surrounding.
So, um, talk about the parking, please. How is the parking supposed to work? Because there's an issue with parking access and maneuverability. Bob, did you look at the plans?
I did not have the opportunity to see them.
Could you please look at them in the meantime? Alright, so tell us how the parking on forty-three, forty-five is supposed to work?
So each unit will have one parking spot. Uh, those parking spots will enter from Wood Avenue. Uh, currently, there is a fence there, that fence will be, uh, taken down, and they will be able to enter directly into Wood Avenue.
And will that be two curb cuts or one curb cut?
One.
One? Let me ask the applicants, uh, did you put your name and address on the record? Yes, you did. So tell us, um, is that going to be one curb cut or two curb cuts that you're proposing? One curb cut for, for forty-three, forty-five, okay? Okay, and, um, okay. Bob, how does that look?
Uh, it works, Madam Chair. Uh, it, it does work, the one behind the other. It doesn't protrude beyond the front of the home. It's just the one behind the other, but it's all in the same house, so it does work.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ollin?
Um, well, I have some questions. Is this a modular design?
Yes.
Okay, um, there's no stamp from an architect, uh, on it. I know most of the modular companies, I see this as a Pennsylvania one, they either have a registered architect, uh, in-house, or they work with somebody, um, you know, I, it, there's, it just refers to an engineer, but there's no engineering stamp either, so it would be, uh, if you're going to buy this from superior builders in Pennsylvania, tell them to give you a set of drawings with a, a stamp from a registered architect.
Oh, absolutely, um, we weren't sure if we were going to do a modular or, or stick yet, but that is the house.
So where-
So you haven't signed a contract with them at this point?
No, I've, I've, I built, I built with them previously the exact same house.
I'm sorry, say it again?
I built the exact same house with them previously.
Where?
Um, Wheatland Ave.
On Wheatland?
Yes.
Do you have photos?
Fifty-four Wheat-
Oh, what, what's the address on Wheatland?
Fifty-two dash fifty-four Wheatland Ave.
And that was modular with superior?
Yes.
And did that, that came before us, right? Did that come before this board?
No, it didn't.
No, it was as of right, okay?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I'm assuming that you guys are looking it up with the computers there?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, uh, well, I guess, um, so you haven't decided yet whether you, this one will be stick-built or on-site, or it'll be modular?
Correct.
Okay, um, the problem is that we are approving the plans as they're presented to us, which are modular.
That's fine. That's, we'd like to, it's up to you.
Okay, so, so we, but you haven't signed a contract with the director yet?
No, I can't until I get this approved.
So, so let me just advise you, if you're going to sign it, tell them you need a registered architect to stamp these drawings as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then the other question I have on the driveway, as, uh, Mr. Camico said, it works. Um, make sure that the depth of the driveway is sufficient for the front end of the front vehicle to be, no, not extend beyond the front of the house, otherwise it, it becomes front yard parking.
Ye- yes.
Okay?
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Brian Flynn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, representing Hyde Park. Two butters meetings were held for this proposal. The second one was actually an onsite proposal that we wanted to do to show good faith to the community so they could get a visual of the site. There were no, there was no opposition at that meeting. It does fit into the aesthetic of the street. There are several multi-families on Wood Ave currently. So, our offices, our office wishes to show our support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with the following proviso-
So, sorry, so 41 Wood Ave, straight approval, because it's an existing building?
Yeah.
May I have a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this, uh, 43, 45 Wood?
Okay, motion to approve with VPAD Design Review and proviso that the plans be stamped by a registered architect.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Uh, may I give a word of advice to you? If you appear before this board, you're here seeking zoning relief. So, we need to know what the base code requests and requires, and what is being proposed, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going to the next case, calling BOA 978-292, 30 to 32 Greenview Avenue. This is adding in addition to the back of the house, new finishes throughout, including one room on the second floor, a condo to the townhouse. The violation is Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-conforming use. This project will extend a non-conforming three-family building. The violation is Article 75, Section 9, floor aer- aer- air, area ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Andrew Plum from Omot Plum Architects. I'm the architect for the project. I have with me the homeowners. I'll let them introduce themselves.
Dan Restuccia, 30 to 32 Greenview Ave, Jamaica Plain.
Good morning. Alyssa Farber, 30, 32 Greenview Ave, Jamaica Plain.
And to my left is my associate, Grace Matheson, who works in our office.
So, tell us what's being proposed?
So, we've just passed out to you diagrams. This is a sort of surgical renovation and small addition that will allow this family that has longstanding roots in the neighborhood to remain as their family grows. Essentially, we're proposing a modest addition on the backside of the house that creates what was a exterior porch into a mudroom, and then, above that, creates one additional small bedroom. So, on the, on the diagrams you have before you, the areas in the yellow color highlight the proposed work. It's important to note that all of this proposed work occurs on the backside of the house, not, none of it's visible from the street. We've also passed out extensive letters of support from all the butters.
So, this is a two-family owner occupied?
It's a three-family, and the owners own two of the three units.
Okay. And what's the total square footage of the addition?
The total additional square footage, I believe, is about 200 square feet. Total house area is currently 4218, and the proposed is 4416. So, it's, yeah, it's about 200 square feet.
This is an extension of non-conforming use? Because this is a two-family, and it's, it's a three-family, and FAR? What is the current FAR, and what's the proposed FAR?
Sure. The current FAR is .54, and the proposed is .58.
What are the plans, Mr. Oliver?
Uh, drawings are fine. This is a relatively denouement project.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
I would like to just point out that-
Hold on.
Sorry.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of the Mayor's Office, we'd like to go on record and support. There was a community process. They do have support from their butters. They also received support from JPNC. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Justin McClair from City Council Madam Ali's office. The council would also like to go on record and support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. You want, there's no need for it.
Nope.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you. Calling the last case tonight, 30, calling BOA 970-966-55 to 57 Hooker Street. It's 55 to 57 Hooker Street here, okay. This is to enclose the front and back porches, also extend living space to the basement. Spot is the first-floor unit. Violation is Article 51, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 51, Section 9, insufficient front yard setback. Article 51, Section 9, insufficient sideyard setback. Name and address for the record, please.
Can you name an address?
My name is Erio Galvez, at 55 Hooker Street. I'm a homeowner.
Okay, and is this a one or a two-family building?
It's a two-family home.
It's a two-family. So, you want to enclose the front and back space. Tell us about the extension to the, into the basement.
The extension into the basement is 687 square feet.
And what will that space be used for? Is that a bedroom, or is it playroom?
Uh, bedrooms.
A bedroom?
Uh, three bedrooms, yes, and a bathroom.
It's two bedrooms and a bathroom in the basement?
Three bedroom and a bathroom in the basement, yes.
And is it connected to the first-floor unit?
Uh, the basement is connected to the first floor, because since the first floor is only one bedroom, so it's going to be connected to the basement.
And so, altogether, that unit, the first-floor unit, will have three bedrooms or four bedrooms?
It will be four bedrooms, including with the first-floor bedroom.
Okay. How are the plans, um, Mr. Oliver?
Um, they're sort of, they're okay. The ceiling height is okay in the basement. The window wells are okay. I'm a little, it's not clear from the plans. Are the utilities going to be in both units?
In the basement.
In the basement?
Yes.
And what's the access of the second unit to the utilities?
It will be accessed, yes.
How do they get there?
To the utility?
Yeah.
There will be access to, to the side of the, the house?
The outside?
Yeah, the outside.
And is there a possibility that this could be developed into a third unit? I mean, is it fully connected?
Well, I mean, it's anything possible, but, uh, no, it's not, not the way it's proposed at the moment.
Okay.
There's, there's a half bath. Hold on. Uh, yeah, there's a small bathroom, no, no kitchen. So, it would, it would require a significantly additional change. Is, is the current access to the utilities from the units and from the outside, so it will be unchanged? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. It won't be unchanged.
Okay.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Calling in with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record and support this proposal. We're conducting a butters meeting back on July 16th. No concerns were raised from the neighborhood. Believe this is a modest proposal that would not be a detriment to the community. Uh, I believe the civic has some concerns. We'll let them speak to that, but we'd like to go on record and support.
Thank you.
Tom Jackson from Councilor Siomo's office. We'd like to go on record and support.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in support? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Tony Tizidoro, representing the Austin Civic Association. The proponent has never appeared before the ACA. And we would humbly request a deferral so that he can go through the community review process. It seems like there are some questions about the plans, and we're very afraid that there could be neighbors that may get very upset at us for not having this proponent go through the community review process. If that is not possible per our bylaws, we have to oppose this project.
Okay. Is anybody else to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, just a quick question for the Mayor's Office. Was there butters? Could you-
Yeah, I mean, nothing butters. I mean, that was July 16th.
So, the, the possibility is that, so, that, that the applicant can visit the ACA in the coming weeks, but in the meantime, we can, we can approve it. May I have a motion, please?
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve of that, understanding.
Is that, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You are approved. Please talk to the gentleman in the back, and make sure you connect with the civic association. Because we will, we will have a report back whether you did or not, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. We will take, we will take a few-minute break and resume at 10:30. Anybody requesting deferral or withdrawal, please make sure you line up. Good morning. The Board of Plpl for Tuesday, October 29th is back in session. Just a reminder, please make sure your cellphones are up, and any conversations are taken outside of the room. In conformance with the open-meeting law, this meeting is being livestreamed. Today, we have a five-member board, and for your project to pass, you need approval from all of us. So, if you need an administrative deferral, you may request it today. We will give you the hearing date at the meeting today. I think that's it, so let's proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call the 10:30 hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals? Address, please.
48 Geneva Street.
For the record, calling BOA 972-965-48-GENEVA STREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Attorney Laurence Catino from Richard Lynn's office, 245 Sumner Street, requesting an administrative deferral due to the five-member board.
May I have a motion, please? It's like the third-
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The date, please?
You'll have a date of December 17th at 11:30.
Okay.
Sorry?
Is there another case you need to-
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Address?
58 Lubac Street.
Okay. Calling BOA 972-963-58-LUBAC STREET. Name and address, name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Laurence Catino from Attorney Richard Lynn's office, 245 Sumner Street in East Boston, requesting an administrative deferral on 58 Lubac Street due to the five-member board.
Motion for deferral.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The date, please?
I will have the date of December 17th as well.
Thank you.
Address, please?
99 Brook Street.
For the record. Calling BOA 948-772-99-BROOK STREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Daniel Toscano, 15 Broad Street, Boston, Mass., 02109. Respectfully requesting a deferral on this matter.
May I have a- Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The date, please?
You'll have a date of December 17th as well, at 11:30. Address, please?
27 Thornley Street.
Two cases, calling BOA 959-027-27-Thornley Street. There's a companion case, BOA 956-275-27-Thornley Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Rod Ellington-Jackson, 129 Newberry Street.
What are you requesting, sir?
Uh, requesting an administrative deferral.
Make a motion for deferral?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The date?
The 11th, date of December 17th at 11:30 as well. Are there any other motion, are there any other deferrals or withdrawals since the 10:30? Madam Chair, we have two cases that are withdrawing, so I'm going to call them in for the record. Case BOA 903-629-21 to 23 Wyman Street is denying, so make a motion for denial without prejudice.
I'm sorry, uh, it's, um, oh, the address again?
The address is 21 to 23 Wyman Street.
Okay, uh, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for denial without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling BOA 959-027-27-Thornley Street. There's a companion case, BOA 956-275-27-Thornley Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Rod Ellington-Jackson, 129 Newberry Street.
Address, please.
Twenty-seven Thornley Street.
Two cases. Calling BOA 959-027-27-Thornley Street. There's a companion case, BOA 956-275-27-Thornley Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Rod Ellington-Jackson, 129 Newberry Street.
Address, please.
Twenty-seven Thornley Street.
Two cases. Calling BOA 959-027-27-Thornley Street. There's a companion case, BOA 956-275-27-Thornley Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Rod Ellington-Jackson, 129 Newberry Street.
Address, please.
Twenty-seven Thornley Street.
Two cases. Calling BOA 959-027-27-Thornley Street. There's a companion case, BOA 956-275-27-Thornley Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Rod Ellington-Jackson, 129 Newberry Street.
Address, please.
Twenty-seven Thornley Street.
Two cases. Calling BOA 959-027-27-Thornley Street.
... building and it's on a sort of a curved, sloped street. And the way the building is designed, although it is one structure, it's positioned as though it would be similar to a two and a three family connected by a garage. And one portion of the right side of the building is within that five-foot setback. So we are still seeking that form of relief.
And tell us about the side and rear yards.
The side yard requirement here is 10 feet. The vertical extension of the building is 10 feet from the side yard. However, because there is below-grade parking in some portions of the building and a retaining wall to support that, that is within the 10 feet, we are still seeking zoning relief for the four-side yard.
Okay.
And that would be the same for rear yard. The rear yard requirement here is 35 feet. There is a shallow lot exception for buildings, rather lots less than 100 feet. However, because when the two parcels here are combined, it creates a triangle or pie-shaped parcel, and a portion of the building is within that of the lot, so we are still seeking relief, and we do have a 21-foot median rear yard.
Right, and is there a roof deck?
There is not a roof deck at this point.
There is a roof deck, and tell us about the loading requirements.
There is no loading requirements for residential use in Article 53, Madam Chair.
So loading with a cart from the curb.
Oh, I'm sorry. There is a proposed curb cut here. Tim, do you want to speak?
Ah, yes. Madam Chair, we do have a proposed curb cut at the center of the lot. Loting would happen at, that curb cut is 20 feet wide. If the cart and the box truck would go right into that curb cut away from traffic and do unloading there.
Okay, and tell us, the garage is between both buildings, right? Where is, where is, where can we see what that looks like?
On the second page-
Second page is the site architectural section.
Drawing CO1. The garage spans both structures. It is one, one building, one foundation, one set of utilities in one building system, as shown on AO1, but the garage layout on drawing CO1, which I think is the second page in your handout.
So from the side, side yard, sidewalk-
Yeah.
-the best view is what you have on your, on your cover sheet with that garage door heading down to the basement?
That's correct.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Owen?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
Um, yeah, just a question for Jeff, the BPDA.
Well, you got new plans today. We didn't get new plans.
So this is based on previous set of plans?
Yep.
Just for the applicant's benefit, the comments of the BPDA were that the assessment of floor area and lot coverage, and you should consider it proposal that reduces the overall size and density of the project. Is that something that the updated plans speak to?
Yes, sir, they do. We did start with one building footprint of nine units. We broke the building in half, reduced the height of the building, and brought it down to really a two-family and a three-family, which is scaled with the neighborhood, and it was, and we had great support at the abutters meeting.
In addition to, we'd like to submit approximately 63 letters of support.
We have 63 signatures supporting the project of the new design.
So I'm going to rely on the description of community process from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Do you have those letters of support?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Nina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, the Office of Neighborhood Services held three abutters meeting for this project where the developer worked with the abutters and addressed their concerns. As well, we got a petition in support of this proposal, signed by fifty, sixty-three, sorry, members of the Orion Heights community. Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Anybody here to speak in opposition? Just one last question. Is there, is there occupancy in the basement?
Unknown, Madam Chair. It is all garage. That's two units.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Again, Jeff, can you please look at that garage door to make it more transparent in some way?
Sure.
Thanks.
Calling the next two cases. Calling BOA 967-782, 34 Belmont Street. There is a companion case, BOA 967-781, 36 Belmont Street. This is for 34. This is a rectoring new two-family, subdivided existing lot of 3,090 square feet into two lots. Lot A to be six, 1,624 square feet. Lot B to be 1,466 square feet. 34 Belmont Street is to semi-attach two families to have one building, and 36 Belmont Street are one family to have one building, and existing building to be raised on a separate permit. The violation is Article 62, Section 8, insufficient additional lot area. Article 62, Section 8, the maximum allowed height has been exceeded. Article 62, Section 8, insufficient usable open space. Article 62, Section 8, insufficient side yard setback. This is for 36 Belmont, rectoring new attached single-family home, the subdivided existing 3,090 square feet into two lots. Lot A to be 1624 square feet, and Lot B to be 1466 square feet. The violation is Article 62, Section 8, the maximum allowed height has been exceeded. Name and address for the record, please.
Brian Hickey.
Tim, sheeran architect. I'm at Nine Wall Street in Charleston, representing Brian for the project. Just to, basically what we're doing is, yeah-
Start off, what, what is the zoning district here?
It's 3F 2,000.
It's 3F 2,000, so you would need 2,000 for the first two units and 1,000 for the third unit.
That's right.
So that's 3,000 square feet?
Yes.
Okay. So you're, you're pretty much at 3,000, but you're proposing the three units in one, in a single family and in a two-family.
That's right. That's correct, yes.
Okay, so, so let's go to the easy path and look at 36 Belmont. What is your only violation, what is your only violation there?
Uh, well, it's height and, yeah, just height, just height.
So what's, what's required and what are you proposing?
Uh, it's three stories, 35 feet is what's required in the zoning. We're proposing four stories and 38 feet, four inches, so we can get parking underneath three occupiable floors.
And this is a single-family?
This is a single-family townhouse, yes.
So it's four stories and parking below. How many parking spaces?
Uh, that'll be two spaces in that house.
Okay. So then let's backtrack to 34.
Yes. 34 is same zone. It's three stories, 35 feet max. Will be the same height, 38 feet, four stories. That's two units. Each unit will be a floor and a half, so we're splitting one of the floors between the units. We're doing a split. That'll be four parking spaces. Two, all units have two spaces for each unit.
And what's the square feet for each, average square foot for the two units?
Uh, they're on 1,400 square feet each.
1,400? Okay, and let's see, so you have insufficient lot area because it's a two-family, maximum usable space. Are you proposing roof decks on either one of these?
On both houses. Both 14 by 14 square feet.
And on the two families, is that only for the top unit or are they-
Just for the, yeah, private roof deck for unit two, yes.
And what's the dimension of the roof decks?
14 foot square.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You just told me that.
That's all right. It's a lot.
Okay, and then, so will this require two curb cuts or is there going to be a shared curb cut?
There's an existing curb cut there now, so we'll just have to relocate a little bit, but we'll do that in such a way where we maintain an existing parking spot.
And likewise, on 36, is there, that it exists?
Yeah, we've said it's one long curb cut now for Brian's current house.
Okay. How are the plans?
Well, we have a little bit of a problem, which is the architect just handed me a revised set of drawings that have not been, they're not stamped by the plans examiner.
No, the changes were so minor, we figured we'd catch it at design review, which is at the neighborhood meeting. The woman in the house next door wanted us to move the roof deck forward and then continue the parapet around the side so she wouldn't see the roof deck, so, and then relocate some windows. So I knew there were no, that doesn't cause any further violations.
Okay, the drawings that I'm looking at are a little, I can't quite tell what the access to the roof deck is.
Oh, it's just through a hatch. No, there's no headhouse.
It is through a hatch.
So on both of them hatch access?
Yeah, no, no headhouse. It just hatches on both.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Quinlan Locke with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record in support of this project, and abutters meeting was held back in July. Many neighbors attended in that area, and as they said, they made some minor changes based on that meeting, and at the end of that meeting, there were no issues at this time. This is a family that's lived on this street for quite some time and has a good reputation on the street of already built buildings, so would like to support.
So are the changes that were discussed at that meeting, because that was in July, you said, these plans are dated September, so were they, has anybody had a chance to review them and see if they were accommodated?
Yes.
Yes, we have sent them out to the abutters as well, through my office. Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review with particular attention to the changes since the last revision.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, Mark-
Thank you.
Calling the next case?
Thank you.
Can you put in some kind of access to a hatch, just on that?
Calling the next case, calling BOA 970-404, 416 Beacon Street. This is an interior and exterior renovations of a four-story brick row house. Proposed work includes repairs, exterior masonry, window replacement, energy-efficient upgrades, renovations to kitchen and bathrooms, reconfiguration of bedrooms, and accessibility upgrades. Current use is an R2 fraternity. Violation is Article 32, Section 9. This is in the groundwater conservation overlay district applicability, and Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
Tim Shields. I'm part of the Alumni Association for 416 Beacon Street.
Have you read the BPDA's recommendation? It's right next to you. And just a reminder, this is a five-member board. I'm not sure you heard us at the beginning, but you need all five of us to be in support for this project to proceed. You can, as others have done, request an administrative deferral.
If we requested deferral, let me, actually, I should introduce myself. My name is Edric Van Busicum. I'm the architect for the project from EVB Design. Madam Chairman, if we requested deferral, can we present our case first or no?
Not today.
Okay.
You would present your case so that we would have a robust hearing-
Yeah.
-and all items would be presented at that time-
Okay, and-
-with, with all members present.
Yeah, and if we do present our case now, we cannot request a deferral. Is that correct?
Correct. If you present now, we will, we will need to make a decision today, and as I said to you, you need all five of us in support. So-
And when would be the next hearing date if we requested deferral?
Likely in December, possibly in January.
Be the last date in December, 17.
Okay. We would respectfully like to request a deferral then.
May I have a motion, please?
Administrative deferral?
Yes.
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The date, please?
They'll have a date of 12/17 at 11:30.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anybody who's here for this case, we will be rehearing it on December 17.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 967-296 Cambridge Street. This is a change of option from retail store to restaurant with takeout, interior fit out of Dunkin' Donuts work to include interior petitions, ceilings, ceiling floors, wall finishes, millware, kitchen equipment, MEP, life safety, including minor sprinkler and fire alarm, and exterior signage. The violation is Article 8, Section 7. The restaurant with takeout is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Tom Miller. Here at the Terminical Team, Miller, 28 State Street, Boston. Here on behalf of Watermark Donut Company. I am joined by Sean Sullivan and Eric Laun, also of Watermark, uh, of Watermark Donut Company. We're here requesting a community reuse permit for this takeout use at the premises. We've been through a robust community process. The, the operators here have our own well-known, high-quality operator, hired locally, run, are, run, the use is appropriate at the space. They know how to design and operate adequate facilities. The location is along Cambridge Street, which is high fat-
Which section of Cambridge Street? What are the cross streets?
Grove Street is the cross street that they're actually on the corner of. Down in, in the 300 Cambridge Street building with Soul Cycle as a, as a landmark. It is a use that complements the area. Similar uses are around it. It is not a new or novel addition to the neighborhood.
Okay, hold on one minute. How are the plans, Mr. Owen?
The drawings are straightforward.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. My colleague Shanice Kimantel did hold a community process related to this. I believe the Beacon Hill Civic Association has submitted a letter of non-opposition. There were concerns around traffic and trash mitigation, but I believe they will work with the abutters on those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, member of the board, members of the board, Tom Clemmons from the Beacon Hill Civic Association, Zoning and Licensing Committee. We've spoken and worked with the applicant at some length to address the traffic issues. This location is right past at the intersection of the main entrance to Mass General Hospital where the ambulance is coming off Storo Drive under the hospital, and if there's double parking, either by patrons or deliveries at that location, it's going to back up traffic past the intersection and possibly create a hazardous situation for the lives of patients and also hazard just in terms of traffic in general on the street. But the applicant has made significant agreements in terms of hours of delivery and steps they'll take to prevent that from happening. It's been a good operator. They've worked in our neighborhood at other locations, and we're reasonably satisfied with their operations, and we think that they'll be a good citizen, given the demand for the product in this location. We think that it's a reasonable application and are in support of it based on the agreement we have with them. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Mr. the Board, Wayne Alvarez, representing the carpenters union. We want to go on record in support of this petition.
Is anything here to speak in opposition? It's interesting that, that survey that you conducted about double parking and then, and who, who actually comes to these, the Dunkin' Donuts.
Yes.
May I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve. I don't think you need, that's signage is straightforward.
How about the takeout provisos?
The usual takeout proviso.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set, good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 975-774-9Leland. The combined lots, erecting new five-story, 43-unit residential building. This will be an affordable housing for the community. There will be a great open-air resident parking spaces for the building. Violation is Article 10, Section 1, limitation of area of accessory uses. Article 50, Section 29, the lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the flood area ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, the building height is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, the building height, number of stories is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, front yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 50, Section 43, off-street loading is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 44, conforming with an existing building alignment. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is John Mahoney, and I live at 16 Primrose Street, Rosendale, and I'm a project manager at Dorchester Bay EDC.
So tell us what's being proposed.
Dorchester Bay proposes to build a fully affordable 43-unit, low-income senior housing consisting of 41 one-bedroom units, two two-bedroom units, community room and offices for management, onsite management staff and service providers. There will be park, nine parking spaces, including nine or two affordable spa, or except fully accessible spaces. Project was previously approved by the BPDA's small, Article 80, Small Project Review.
John, hold on one minute. So there's 43, 43 units, 41 one-bedrooms, two two-bedrooms, nine parking spots.
Yes.
And how many staff are you anticipating on, anticipating on-site?
On-site, we expect there to be the manager, property manager, and a service provider, and at times various maintenance staff.
So, so maybe three or four staff?
I'd say three.
Three staff, okay, and so that the parking can, can accommodate these. What, what is the average size of the one-bedroom and two-bedroom?
The average size of the one-bedroom is 600 square feet. The two-bedrooms are, I think, about 750.
Okay. And any, you know, van service or anything like that for the elders will all be accommodated in the driveway or off the street?
Uh-
So if the ride, for example, or, or any other kinds of services like that?
When we met, we've met with the city and BPDA previous to this, and they expressed an interest in putting aside a loading zone in front of the building on the street, marking off.
Okay. And not, not on-site? Okay. Okay, um, how are the plans, Mr. Owen?
The drawings are okay.
Who is, who is your architect in this?
Dream, dream collaborative.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On June 11th and 20th, the Dorchester Bay Economic Development Corporation held a community meeting. Eight letters of support were submitted to the BPDA. They also received a support letter from the Dudley Square Neighborhood Initiative. The community meetings were very positive, and we'd like to go on record to support.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Brandon. I'm here on behalf of Counselor Janie in support of this project.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
There's a question. Has a contractor been selected for the project?
Pardon?
Has a contractor been selected for the project?
No.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
I'll second that motion.
Before I, before I call it, Jeff, again, just like the one in East Boston, please make sure that this goes to a really robust design review process?
Yep.
Okay, because we'd like to see, start seeing something that's more reflective of the, of the neighborhood. So all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The back proviso.
Thank you.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 981-150-63-Nahant Avenue. There is a companion case, BOA 981-146-66-68-Pass Avenue. This is 63 Nahant to construct a new, construct a new occupied single-family on a new lot created in the subdivision of 66-68-Pass Avenue. Violation is Article 65, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the flood area ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 65, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. This is for 66-68-Pass Avenue. This is subdivided an existing 5,500-square-foot lot, creating two new lots consisting of 2,860 square feet with an existing two-family on Lot B of 2,640 square feet for a new single-family home. Violation is Article 9, Section 1, an existing building is a two-family which is forbidden in a 1F 5,000 district. Article 65, Section 9, the new subdivision creates an undersized lot, lot area is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the flood area ratio is excessive, and Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher, RCL C, with a project architect, with a business address of 415 DePont's Ave. Joined to my right by the owners, Anthony Melchanda and my wife, Jessica. The proposal here, Madam Chair, is to subdivide the existing lot, which is a through lot from Pierce Ave to Nahant. No change to the structure of the building on Pierce Ave, and then to construct a new single-family home on the newly-created lot on Pierce Ave, I mean, on Nahant.
Now, is this subject to flooding? Is this a flood zone?
No.
No?
Yes.
Okay, so please tell us what's being proposed.
The proposal is to construct a three-story, four-bedroom home, living space in the basement with a oversized single-car garage and a driveway. The side yard required is 10 feet. We're at 5 foot and 6 foot respectively. The minimum rear yard is 20 feet, will be at 14. The FAR is required to be .5 or .99, and the allowable height is 35 feet. We're at 33 foot two.
So again, tell us how the, how the, how the parking works at Lot A on Pierce Street?
On Pierce Ave, there's currently a driveway that, that serves the parking for the existing building, and that remains in place. No change to that.
Okay. So tell us about Lot B on, on Nahant.
Lot B will have an attached garage. It's oversized for a single car, so you'd be able to park potentially two if city owner recognizes it as one spot, but there'd be spillover space in the driveway for additional car.
And then there's a family room in the basement?
That's correct.
And your roof deck or anything like that?
No. No.
And this is stick-built?
Correct.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Owen?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chairman, members of the board, Padraig Fendel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. There was an abutters meeting held on July 25th of this year. The applicants worked extensively to make sure the design fit in with the existing neighborhood. We'd like to go on record in support of this project.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGapron, City Counselor, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Counselor, Abby George's office. We'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Okay, so let's take two votes. One's an existing building and one is a proposed building, so on the first, at 63 Nahant, may I have a motion, please? I mean, sorry, yes, Nahant is existing. May I have a motion, please?
Existing building, motion to approve.
But Pierce is backwards. So may I have a motion on Pierce?
On the existing building, motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? On 63 Nahant?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 965-021-59-Rockney-Ave. This is to raise the existing single-family, erect a new single-family dwelling. The violation is Article sixty-five, Section forty-one, off-street parking is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the lot area is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the building height is excessive in feet. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the front yard is insufficient, and Article sixty-five, Section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher of RCL C, with a business address of four fifteen DePont's Ave with a project architects. The proposal here is to raise the existing single-family building, primarily to adjust the ceiling heights and create a little bit of additional living space. The floor-to-ceiling heights now are a little low, and my client's like six-six, so he'd like to make them a little taller. He's a Boston police officer and would like to stay in the neighborhood. We held an rebutters meeting onsite the project, we've met with support and no opposition.
So, Mr. Christopher, can you go through the violations, please?
Sure. The FAR allowed is point five, the proposed is one point four-seven, the allowable height is thirty-five feet, we're at thirty-six to the ridge, two and a half stories, we're at three. The front yard is required to be fifteen, we're at ten feet, which is the modal. The side yard is, requirement's ten feet, we'll be at five foot ten and seven foot five. The rear yard is twenty feet, is required, we're at fourteen, and that's it.
Tell us about the parking.
There's a common driveway on the side of the house, which would allow for parking for, it's legally one spot, but there's no chance of the existing use, it'll remain in place.
And you've seen the BPDA's recommendation?
How are the plans, Mr. Eller?
The drawings are adequate. As the new structure on the same footprint?
If it gets a little bigger, Mr. Eller, it'll be a good foundation.
It'll be a new foundation.
Yes.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Fendell, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. There was an rebutters meeting held on onsite and was met with full support from the neighborhood. We'd like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeekren, City Counselor, Frank Baker's office, we'd like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Counselor, Abby George's office, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, Justice Counselor, Michael Flaherty, we'd like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA designer view.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the last two cases, at ten-thirty, calling BOA 948-520-5ORLANDO-STREET. There's a companion case, BOA 948-519-5ORLANDO-STREET. That's the building code. So, this is for Five Orlando. This is a change of arc from eleven apartments to twelve apartments, renovate the existing storage area, convert unit three in accordance with the plans. No structural changes. The violation is Article sixty, Section thirty-seven, off-street parking is insufficient. Article sixty, Section eight, use of basement apartment is forbidden. Article sixty, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty, Section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Article nine, Section two, the change in the non-conforming use. This is building code for Five Orlando. This is a change of arc from eleven apartments to twelve. This is the ninth edition seven eighty CMR nine oh three point two point eight, use group R. An automatic sprinkler system installed in accordance with Section nine zero three point three shall be provided throughout all building with a group R fire area. The plans submitted do not indicate an installation of a fire sprinkler system. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Charlie Tebbin, Fifteen Broad Street, Boston, representing Five Orlando LLC. To my right is James Harrison, appearing on behalf of Five Orlando LLC.
As you know, when we have a project that has building code requirement and a zoning, request for zoning relief, we first look at the building code, so please tell us how that will be addressed.
Madam Chair, I would like to respectfully withdraw that appeal, and the reason I'd like to withdraw it without prejudice and go forward on the zoning appeal is that in between when the appeal was filed, the, and I've submitted a memorandum, a copy of what was submitted to the Inspection Services Department, the detailed fire protection plan was reviewed by the plan examiner, and they have removed the building code violation from the file.
Okay, so may I have?
Yeah, well, we can just make a motion to deny any building code relief, and that will cover it. As long as you're compliant, there's no problem.
Without prejudice?
And we're going to make, so the motion is, so the motion is denied without prejudice based on a request for withdrawal from you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's get to the zoning code. You've seen the BPDA's recommendation?
Yes. Madam Chair, this is an existing twelve-unit building located at Five Orlando Street, Matapan, right across from Allmont Park. When it was originally applied for construction in nineteen sixty-three, the application was for, I misspoke, it's an eleven-unit building. The, it was originally applied as a twelve-unit building. What was constructed was an eleven-unit building with a separate onsite manager's office on the first level. The building is, consists of three levels, and the request is to add a fourth unit on the first level that was originally proposed in nineteen sixty-three.
Okay, so a few years have gone by since nineteen sixty-three, so can you tell us about the breakdown of the units in the building, one, twos, or threes, and their average square footage?
Yes. So, this is currently eleven occupied units. They're all two bedrooms, and they're around seven hundred square feet. The proposed unit is a one-bed, which is about five hundred square feet.
So, five hundred square feet for a one-bedroom?
Yes, Madam Chair.
So, okay, how are the plans, Mr. Eller?
The drawings are adequate. I guess I have a question for Jeff, which is that the suggested proposed unit is too small, but if it's five hundred square feet, that's?
Yeah, we feel that there's adequate use of the building right now.
I'm sorry.
We feel that there's adequate use of the building right now.
Okay.
I'd like to add, Madam Chair.
Hold on. Any other questions from the board? Jessica, would you like to add?
Just that there would be no structural changes to the exterior or the interior, Madam Chair. This is a, an existing space on the first level that originally was intended to be a twelfth unit.
What is the unit's block?
Storage.
Okay, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Whitney Celeston with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We held an rebutters meeting for this project, and we did hear concerns from neighbors about Savannah Street and some parking concerns, but considering the unit count in this project already and the minimal impacts to the community, it's a single unit, we'd like to go on record as support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Counselor, Abby George's office, we'd like to support this project. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
To approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And just for the record, I will put on the record that I am opposed, so the motion, the project has been denied. Okay? Thank you.
Madam Chair.
I mean, the option for you is to take that first unit and expand it in some way or some other option. The meeting is now adjourned from five minutes until eleven-thirty. In the meantime, let me remind you that this is a five-member board. You need all five. Good morning. The Board of Appeal for Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, is back in session, and we are listening to the rediscussions that are scheduled for eleven-thirty. Just a reminder, please make sure your cellphones are off, and if you are in need of to have a conversation, please take all of them outside of the room. In conformance with the open meeting law, I'm letting you know that this meeting is being livestreamed. If you are here to speak in support or in opposition to a project, put your name and address on the record, and tell us the reason for your support or opposition. Comments from the neighbors, the public, elected officials, and the BPDA are all advisory, so when you get a chance at the mic, give us new information. If somebody has already stated your concern, just put your name and address on the record. Finally, this is a five-member board. With a five-member board, you need all of us to be in support of your project. So, the option for you is to take an administrative deferral as an applicant. We will schedule the date today. Mr. Eller?
Mr. Ford.
I mean, sorry, Mr. Ford. Where's my brain today?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call the rediscussions for eleven-thirty. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals? Counselor address, please.
Thank you. Sixty-nine Lubec Street.
You have one today, or two? Okay. So, we'll do Lubec Street first, calling BOA 937-977-69-LUBEC-STREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago, with Drago and Toscano, with an address of Fifteen Broad Street. We are seeking administrative deferral today.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The date, please?
We are into two thousand twenty. We're going to do January fourteenth of two, in two thousand twenty at eleven-thirty.
Thank you.
Okay.
Other address, please?
Ninety-seven Salem Street.
For the record, BOA 818-471-97-SALEM-STREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Again, Attorney Jeff Drago, with an address of Fifteen Broad Street. We are seeking an administrative deferral.
Motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date?
So, it'll be a date of January fourteenth as well, at eleven-thirty.
Thank you.
Counselor address, please?
Three forty-three, three forty-five Chelsea Street.
Just have one?
Yes.
Okay. For the record, calling BOA 889-514-343 to 345 Chelsea Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Laurence Catino from Richard Lynn's office, two forty-five Sumner Street in East Boston, requesting an administrative deferral.
Make a motion for deferral.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
It'll be January fourteenth at eleven-thirty. Address, please?
One thirty-eighth Center Street.
For the record, calling BOA 947-958-138-CENTER-STREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher of RCL C, with a business address of four fifteen DePont's Ave, requesting an administrative deferral.
Make a motion for deferral.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We have a date of January fourteenth, two thousand twenty, at eleven-thirty.
Thank you very much.
Address, please?
To Mr. Ford. First is sixty-two, sixty-four Baxter Street.
For the record, calling BOA 938-192-62-64-BAXTER-STREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, my name is George Ramsey, I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway, I'd like to request a deferral in this matter.
Make a motion for deferral.
Second.
An administrative deferral or regular?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Maranti, they have a date of January fourteenth at eleven-thirty as well.
Thank you. Also administrative deferral request, ninety-seven Farragut. I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time here.
Slow down, slow down. Sorry.
Do them later. Do them after.
For the record, calling BOA 99613-97-FARRAGUT-Road. Name and address for the record, please.
George Maranti, attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston.
May I have a motion for deferral?
I'm going to do it real slow.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'm calling.
The date, please?
January fourteenth, two thousand twenty, at eleven-thirty.
Thank you.
I'm going to do it real slow with you. Address, please.
Nine Bernie Street, and I have?
So, you have companion cases? Okay.
And I have companion cases with it.
I'm sorry?
And I have companion cases with it.
Yes, correct. I'm going to call them on to the record. Calling BOA 808-136-9-BERNIE-STREET. There are four companion cases with this, so BOA 982-967-9-BERNIE-STREET, BOA 982-962-1508 to fifteen fourteen Tremont Street. to 1514 TREMONT STREET, BOA 982-965-1516 to 1518 TREMONT STREET, and BOA 982-955-1520 TREMONT STREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Bud Chadray, Chadray and Chadray, 31 STATE STREET, 54 BOSTON, MASSO, 2109, REQUESTING DEFERAL.
May I have a motion?
Deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We'll also have a date of January 14th, 2020, at 11:30.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30? There are none. If you just give me a few minutes, I'll get the next case up.
Take your time.
Okay. Away from Mr. Ehrlich. Just tell me when you're ready.
You know what? Just keep going. I'll, I guess I'll catch up.
Okay. Calling the next case for 11:30, calling BOA 961-962-110, MOUNT PLEASANT AVE. MOUNT PLEASANT AVE here?
The applicant here from Mount Pleasant Avenue. Okay, we will hold that case.
All right. Okay. I haven't got one yet. Calling the next two cases. Calling BOA 992-109-24 RAND STREET. There's companion case BOA 992-105-28 RAND STREET. This is for 24 RAND. This is a recting three-family dwelling. Violation is Article 50, Section 29, the lot area is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the lot width is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the lot frontage is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the side yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking shown is insufficient, the number of spaces, sizes of spaces, and maneuverability. Article 50, Section 44, 50-44.3, the traffic visibility across the corner is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 44, 50-44.5, special provisions for corner lots, front yard along Julian Street, is insufficient. This is for 28 RAND STREET. Direct a three-family dwelling. The violations are exactly the same as the previous, so I'm not going to call them at the record. Name and address for the record, please.
Vernon Mudworth, I'm the architect, 9 Elizabeth STREET IN MATTHEPENT.
Kenneth DeDabo, the owner, 21 JULIANS.
So tell us what your proposal to do.
The owner's family has lived in the neighborhood for generations and owned these two lots for quite a number of years. The plan is to build two adjacent three-family buildings with provisions for two family members to live on the ground floor units and rentals on the floors above. The list of violations indicates that the lots are a little bit undersized. They're not as dramatic as the extent of the variations would sound. The view across corners at the corner lot has to do with the proximity of the structure to the property lines. However, that adjacent street, Julian Street, is one-way and there is sufficient viewing in that direction for oncoming traffic. Beyond that, it's a straightforward two, three families in line with similar building types in the neighborhood.
What's the zoning district?
It's a three F, 5,000.
So you would need a 75, a 7500 square foot lot for three families. So what's the, what's the size of 24 RAND, the lot size?
36, 24. 3,624.
3,000, sorry?
624.
And 28?
I think they're identical, 36, 40. 36, 40, so slightly-
Slightly varying.
Yeah.
Okay. And let's see, I think the, the lot frontage lot with lot, lot, because these are, and these are existing lots, right?
Correct.
So not recreated lots. So all this, some of this is because of the existing lot. The issue then becomes FAR, open space, side yard, rear yard, and the traffic visibl- and the, I think you do not have enough parking.
So there is parking on the site. There's six spaces which don't meet the maneuverability criteria. However, because the configuration of the lots allows for through traffic, the angular, the angular parking arrangement is convenient and will suffice for smaller vehicles.
So on the site plan, can you tell us how that would work?
Julian Street is one-way, so you'd have to enter from the top and then on the left, you can pull directly into one of the diagonal spaces. The problem with diagonal spacing is backing out, which can be problematic if there's oncoming traffic. However, because this is private parking, we don't expect that to be an issue. So pulling back out, you can then proceed this way down a- Private lane. It's a private lane, but open to traffic and exit on the other side.
And you have access to it? It's not, yep, it goes with the land?
It's a private way.
It's a private way.
Yeah, RAND PLACE. RAND PLACE, okay.
Okay. Okay. And then, let's see. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are fine.
Any questions from the board? Does anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, my name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. During the community process, we received an overwhelming amount of support from Director Butters, State Rep Liz Miranda, and a Dudley Square Neighborhood Initiative. The homes will be a great addition to the neighborhood and allow for Mr. DeDabo to stay in the community, which he does business here and has grown up here. We'd like to go on record to support the project.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, I'm Brandon Russell from the Office of Boston City Council, Kim Janney, here to be on record and support the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you speaking in support?
Yes.
Yes, you.
My name is Ricardo Bryant. My address is 20 Judson STREET. I live right near him. I'm in support of the project.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, VCPA Design Review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 970-592-9211 SEVENS AVE. This is an existing six-family apartment building at 5 Brown Terrace is to be combined with other existing attached six-family buildings at 9 SEVENS AVE, 11 SEVENS AVE, and 7 Brown Terrace to become one building addressed as 9211 SEVENS AVE. Of 33 apartments, the change of arcs will include nine additional units in the basement, include the existing, the existing, renovate the existing unfinished basement of the existing 24-unit brick-clad apartment, building for nine units, new nine units, and existing basement including two Group 2A, minor modifications to the rear exterior for light egress and lift. The renovated basement will be fully sprinkled. The violation of Article 9, Section 1, extension of non-conforming use, Article 80, Section 80E-2, this is, building is in a neighborhood, district, overlay district. Article 55, Section 40, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 55, Section 8, the MFR is used in a 3F 5,000 sub-district. Article 55, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 55, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 55, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Nick Suzola, McDermott, Coltia Miller, 28 STATE STREET here in Boston. With me to my, excuse me, with me to my immediate left is Paul Mahoney from Hajar Management and Seaverns Brown Realty Trust. To my far left is Derek Rubenoff from Rubenoff Architects. He's the architect in the project. Provided you just some background information and project overview, things of that sort, and plans for the project. Basically, the proposal, there's an, there's four existing six-unit buildings at 9 and 11 Seaverns AVE and 5 and 7, 7, 5 and 7 Brown Terrace. And the proposal, these, they're all connected buildings. For some reason, ISD has them addressed individually. So the first matter was a matter of housekeeping, just to combine them into one building to be 9-11 Seaverns AVE. And then in addition, to add nine studio rental units to the existing unfinished basement of this combined building. The building was built in the 1920s. At one point, there were originally living units in the basement. It was then turned over to HVAC, storage, mechanical equipment, and the property owner, developers now asking to revert them back to, to dwelling units in the basement.
So is there any indication that they were dwelling units?
Is there any indication that there were dwelling units? Not that I know of. That's what we were told from the, from the seller of the property.
There was nothing in the building jacket?
Not that I could find.
Just physical characteristics.
Just physical characteristics of walls between the units and things like that. Right now, it's primarily vacant space, underutilized space, with some amount of storage and some bicycle storage, but for the most part, it's just unused.
Okay, so let's, let's get to the meat of the matter then. Tell us, are these are all studios?
Yes, ma'am. So the proposal is for nine studio units. They're between 450 and 513 square feet. You'll see from the first tab, we do provide kind of a summary of the units themselves. The ceilings, which I know is always an issue with basement units, are between eight feet and eight feet four inches. And in fact, the units themselves are actually not completely underground. The tops of the walls are actually three feet or so above grade. There are windows into these units. There will be more than one or two windows per unit.
With wells for egress?
Yes.
Okay. How about utilities?
I was just going to speak. There, it's not necessary for actual window wells because the, the windows are sufficiently above grade.
Okay.
And, so there would be nine units. We worked with the, the neighborhood group as well as with the BPDA. We are providing one voluntary affordable unit at 80% AMI as part of this proposal. In your packet, the second tab, we've gone to the board in October this month, a few weeks ago, to get approval for that. Because it's an existing unit, technically, we don't need to comply with the IDP because of the existing building. We're only adding nine units to that. But in discussions with the BPDA and with the neighborhood, we've agreed to-
Smart move.
To add a unit at 80% AMI.
Utilities will be separate?
The utilities will be separate, yes. For each unit, yes.
Okay. So you said there were 450. Tell us about parking.
So there is no, there's no existing parking at the site now, and there's no room to add existing parking. That's an existing nonconformity. We were cited for off-street parking insufficient. We are less than a half mile to the Green Street MBTA Orange Line Station. This, this Seaverns Avenue where this is located is right around the corner from Center Street. So all of the businesses, takeout restaurants, markets, everything on Center Street is right around the corner as well. And we are providing additional bike parking for up to 10 spaces to help further mitigate the lack of onsite parking. So basically, there's no room for it. There hasn't been parking here for the existing 24 units, and there's no ability for us to add parking either as part of this proposal.
And does the exterior of the building need to be upgraded in any way?
The exterior of the building? Yes. So we are actually, will be improving the accessibility to the building. Because the units were built in the 20s, there are no accessible units. It's a traditional building where you step up several steps to get to the stoop to get into the building, so none of the units are now accessible. We will be adding vertical lift access to these units in the basement. So two of the units will actually now be Group 2A accessible units, which as of now there are none in the building, so we'll be adding two of those. One of those would actually be the affordable unit that we're providing. The other units would be Group 1 accessible. So in order to add accessibility to those units, we are asking for minor modifications to the rear exterior to add access via that lift. And those are in the plans that we have provided to you, both to the board for approval and also on Tab 1. So we are in a neighborhood design overlay district. This area is not, where this is being located, you're not going to really be able to see this from the public view. It's really tucked in behind the building. That's the only thing we're doing. Other than that, the building will remain the same.
How are the plans?
Well, I have a problem with the plan.
Okay.
Mr. Suzolo said that it was, everything was 450 feet or more square feet. I'm looking, well, I'm looking at the existing, I'm looking at the rentable unit areas, level area of change of use. The drawings are a little unclear.
Yeah.
There's, I mean, in one, it says Unit 1, 396 square feet. Unit 2, 412 square feet. Unit 5, 402 square feet. Unit 4, 425 square feet. Unit 3, 415 square feet, all of which are below 450.
Right.
And the other drawings, they're, they're slightly larger, except for Unit 7, which is 440 square feet. So all of that is below, I mean, when you said 450 square feet above, you were saying that because that's the city minimum. But that's actually not what it shows on the plan.
So I would defer that to Derek as the architect, but we did provide in our memo, the last page of the first tab, that my understanding is the, that's what I was basing my square footages on. And those all show clearly that they're 450 square feet or more, but I can, I'll let Derek talk about that a little more.
Yes, just to respond to your, your comment, the, the various plans have different ways of calculating the square footages, whether it's by the building code or by the zoning code, or by looking at means of egress. But the one that we want to look at for the purposes of the zoning here, this conversation, would be if you're looking at the 9 Seaverns set, G-0.1, which is the Life Safety Plan and Code Review, the bottom left-hand corner is drawing 2.
Right, you've got the basic rentable unit areas, which you've got the largest square footage, then, then, I mean, I'm not quite, I mean, square foot is a square foot. I don't quite understand how you could have different, different measurements.
Because the, the building code measures to the inside face of exterior walls and the zoning code talks about measuring to the outside face of zoning walls. So what we'd like to do is go by-
Is there that much of a difference?
I'm sorry?
Is there that much of a difference?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Is there that much of a difference in square footage, though, between the low 400s and 450s?
Sure, sure. It can make a difference. That's right. But we went, this being a zoning issue, we went based on the zoning code definition of gross square footage, which is measured to the outside face. So in the handout-
Can I ask, Jeff, have you guys looked at these plans?
Yes, we have. And they've worked diligently, and we are in support of these size units, and I completely understand where discrepancies-
Because this is not, it either is the compact living or it's not. If it's under 450 square feet, it's compact living, in which case you need a community room. And the closest community room that I can see is JP LIX. This is, this is really on the edge, and these are awfully small units.
Have you thought about creating one-bedrooms, you know, combining some of these studios to create one-bedrooms?
I think the market demand, we thought that the area would do better with studio apartments.
So the area might do better for studio apartments, but the community will not do better with these tiny units.
So to that point, Madam Chair, the existing building has 24 units. There's only one studio in the entire building that's existing right now. There are 18 one-beds, and there are five one-bed pluses, so it's not a studio building. I think that was a little bit of the, my understanding is that was a little bit of the thought process, was there are no studios in this building. Where can we, if we fit some studios and capture underutilized space, could we put them in here? We did go to the community, to the JPNC. We had an Abutter meeting as well at Curtis Hall. The issue on the sizes of the units was actually seen as a positive because it will help keep the-
That's, that's, you know, that's what the city guidelines are.
Understood, yeah.
Right? And that's what we adhere to. And it seems to me that you've got one drawing-
Yeah.
...that does not meet city guidelines, or if it's under, then it falls under the compact living, which requires community space, and there's none there. And you've got another drawing of the same space with miraculously different square-foot measurements, and I find it troubling.
Well, you know, we still have the option to do something about it. In the meantime, beyond that, is there, is other any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. My colleague Enrique Pepin did hold a community process related to this proposal. We'd like to go on record in support, mainly based on some of the compromises that they've made with the community and the BPDA around the IDP unit and things like that. We do defer to the board, obviously, about the concerns you have about the unit sizes, but at this time, we would like to support the project. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Justin McClair from City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office. Our office would also like to go on record in support of this project.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor Sabi George's office. Would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, board members. I speak as a businessman in Jamaica Plain-
Excuse me, put your name and address on the record.
I'm sorry, it's Paul Iantoska, 709 Center Street, Jamaica Plain. I've been a member of the Jamaica Plain Business Association for 38 years, and I'm president of the Washington Street Businessmen Association. I've spoken to all of the abutters. I am the largest direct abutter. I have the exact same building. They were sister buildings. My building had studios built and approved in the 1960s. And I can tell you that the demand for these units is insatiable. We have veterans, we have elderly, we have handicapped. And what they like is the affordability of them. They like that they're not too large, and they also like that they're only 50 feet from Center Street, which is where all the businesses and the restaurants and the thrift shops are. You also have the 39 bus line there. The orange line is two blocks down the street. We do have a 20-car parking lot with our building, a total of 36 units in ours with the studios. And we actually have five empty spaces. People who love this particular area of town like the fact they don't need a car, they have bicycles, and they walk, and they take mass transit. I believe you have two letters from the other two direct abutters, the Stamatys family and the McDonald family, in full support of the project. And I'd like to go on record in full support of the project, as there is a very big need for units like this.
You were doing walk on your building not so long ago. Is your basement, do you have basement units in yours?
Well, they're what we call garden units. It's half underground, half above-
Yeah.
...with large 36 by 36 European windows that open out.
Yeah, so, but you haven't come in for your request yet?
No, I, my building was approved in 69.
For the basement space?
Yes, yes, yes. It was built in the 20s. They're identical buildings. It was a courtyard-
Yeah.
...with two identical buildings. The Hajaz bought one, I bought the other one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Okay, may I have a motion, please? Because, you know, the possibility is eight units, so that, you know-
No, I'm going to make, I'm going to make a motion to deny without prejudice the current, the current configuration, which would allow the applicant to come back with a, with a different configuration.
Is there a second to that?
Yeah, I'm going to second their motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I too am in support of that motion, so we'll see you, that's the motion, and we'll see you at a later date.
Okay.
Calling the next case, BOA 989-017, 709 VFW Parkway. This is a change of use occasion from real estate office to retail store with outdoor monument display. Violation to Article 56, Section 7, the local retail business is forbidden. Article 56, Section 7, outdoor sale or display use is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Brian Burke, 709 VFW Parkway.
Put your name and address on the record.
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, Brian Burke. I presently own the property there at 709 VFW Parkway. I'm selling to the gentleman next to me with your attorney, who are going to put a monument company, they're proposing a monument company, therefore, the change of use. I passed up a photo of the property, the way it exists, and there's no changes to the existing structure that they're proposing. It's strictly a change of use. The second page is, it's a-
So, a number of us know the location, and this particular property has been before this board many times. So, can you tell us how this is going to function? So, you're going to have that office still there. Will any of those curb cuts be closed off? And where will the monuments be? And where will the parking for visitors to the site be?
Madam Chair, if I could, my name is Attorney Jennifer Penkham, and I represent Quincy Memorials, and I'd like to speak as to those points and some other points, if I may. As Mr. Burke mentioned, we are involved in potentially purchasing the property located at 709 VFW Parkway. We've entered into a purchase and sale agreement, and we're offering fair market value for this property.
Let's just talk about the zoning, okay?
Certainly, absolutely. With respect to your questions relative to curb cut, there will be no changes. With respect to the question relative to parking spaces, Jeff Corrier has a nice demographic of where the spaces will be, which is in front of the board, and he can point and draw your attention to those spaces. There's also in your packet, at Tab 2, a depiction of where those spaces will be, and you see that there's six parking spaces on that particular lot layout. And as we may have mentioned before, but will certainly mention again, this is not a very active retail location. Monument businesses may get one to three individuals per day, maybe. In the winter months, it becomes very slow. As you might know, winter is a very slow season for monuments. It's really in the spring, summer time that it picks up. So, it's an average of one to three businesses, pardon me, customers that will come in per day.
Backtrack. So, this particular proposal, if I'm looking at the certified plot plan in Tab 2, so this includes parcel 1 and parcel 2. Is that right?
It's that whole location at 709-
It's the whole corner?
The whole corner lot.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay.
And so, there isn't really a concern about excess parking or individuals coming in. They also do make appointments on an as needed basis, but this is a business that runs during normal business hours, a nine-to-five type of business. And I just do want to point out to Madam Chair and the rest of the board members, that this particular business was previously zoned as a, as a retail operation. And we do have the zoning history. It was, it was, it was some sort of a tailor shop at one point, tailoring and dry cleaning prior to the current use as an office space. With this new person, this new business coming in, Quincy Memorials, they have three other locations. We've shown in our documents that we've provided, the pictures of the three other locations. And you mentioned, you had a question about where the monuments would physically be. You can see on that plot plan where they're depicted. And Quincy Memorials is also willing to work with the neighborhood and the board as far as where they, where they want them, if they want to limit the amount of them. There obviously was some concern as to having too many monuments or having them look dilapidated. I do want to make mention that as a, they have three other locations. I've included photos of those locations. The monuments are washed yearly. They take pride in their locations.
Let's just go back. So, so there is, will you be, there's a sign, a sign pad that's been sitting there for, I would, I want to say 30 years. Will you be using that sign pad at all?
I'll defer to Jeff on that. They intend to erect a sign if, if possible. Yes, they would like to erect a sign.
Okay, so for now, you're just coming in for change of use for this parcel. How many, how many people will be in the building at any given time, staff, people?
Physically, one.
One, okay. And, okay.
And by appointment, there may be two people if somebody needs to come in for an appointment. But it's very low use, and I would suggest to the board that this property is now really rundown, dilapidated. This would be a huge economic development area if Quincy Memorials can take it over and have this property rezoned.
Okay, is that the plan you're starting?
Well, it's just a plot plan, no.
There are no physical changes being suggested to the exterior of the building, other than refurbishment, cleaning, and just making sure that it looks nice.
Well, just out of curiosity, how, what are the regulations, or who regulates, like, how much is in front of the building and the much?
We're not aware of any, we're not aware of any specific regulations that regulate how many monuments there can be, but we're certainly happy to abide by any restrictions that this board puts on Quincy Memorials. They're happy to adhere to a certain limited number of monuments. The reason why monument exposure is so important is because consumers, when they come, they want to see how they withstand the elements. They want to see how they look in the outside, because that's-
I think you should just hold on for a minute, okay?
Jeff, is this, is this something that the BPDA would look at in terms of design review?
No, the only thing that we would ask to look at would be a sign, but if they're not applying for a freestanding sign right now, they'd have to come back, because freestanding signs aren't allowed, except for gas stations.
So, they could put as much or as few items in front of the building as, without restriction?
So, is, let me, hold on, let me, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is any, you're speaking in support?
Yes, I am.
So, please put your name and address on the record.
John Papanopoulos, I'm VFW Parkway resident, 886-
I'm sorry, what's your address?
Could you go to the podium then?
Sorry?
Could you go up there, speak into the podium? Thank you.
What's your address, sir?
886 VFW Parkway.
Okay.
And I'm in favor of it, because the building itself, and also the area, is going to look much better than it is right now, and I'm for it.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, just like to go on record of opposition. Throughout the community process, we've heard a majority opposition from direct of butters and other people in the neighborhood. One of the main concerns is the monuments being displayed outside, the number of monuments, and also that there's two monument companies located down the street from this location. The applicant then went before the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on September 17th and was unanimously opposed. I have several letters of opposition that I'd like to submit, including a letter of opposition from State Representative Ed Coppinger and State Senator Mike Rush. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Shannon Murphy from City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office. The council would like to go on record in opposition of this project as well.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan, I'll be absent, Councilor Michael Flaherty. Echoing the sentiments of the mayor's office, the council would go on record in opposition.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor Sabi George's office. Would like to go on record in opposition to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any response?
Yes.
Yes, I would like to respond as to the other monument companies and the monuments outside. Obviously, we're willing to make any concessions that the neighborhood wants as far as the monuments outside and limit the number. We're also willing to make sure that there's a concerted effort to keep those monuments clean on an annual basis. With regard to the other monument companies, I would like you to draw your attention to the package of materials that I've given to you. Quincy Memorials attempted to purchase one of the monument companies, Carrick Monuments. And you'll see in the package at Tab 5, a letter from the attorney that represents Carrick, stating that they, they're willing to, they're willing to sell it as is. And at that point, there were too, too many risks, and this market right here, there's five cemeteries in this area. It's a very busy area for the monument business. With regard to the other monument business that they're claiming exists, I would draw your attention to item number 12 in your package, and 11, which is a photograph of Caniff Monument Company, which is a dilapidated building, and also a screenshot of the-
I'm just, I'm just-
I'm just speaking in, in response.
No, 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 I'm going to have to stop you right there. My father is buried at one of those cemeteries, and I think we're all familiar with those, with the monuments there. So, it sounds like as far as the concerns that were raised about the, the display of the monuments and other issues seem to be compelling, so may I have a motion, please?
Oh, I was in opposition, I created my hand.
I'm sorry, so please put your name and address on the record.
William Carrick. Our place of business is 771 La Grange Street, West Roxbury. My home address is 68 Cornell Street, Rosendale. We're from Tom Carrick and Son Monument Company. We're only one intersection away from this property.
So, you're related to Laura Spark, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
It's my brother Joe's wife, who used to actually work in the business for years. There was nine in our family who've always worked in the business. We've been at it over 100 years.
Yeah.
And, you know, the, the notice, they say, you know, why I really came in here is when I-
So, just tell us what your opposition is based on.
Well, for starters, when I first went to the abutters meeting in the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, Mr. Burke was trying to sell the property in Quincy Memorials, stated that we've been out of business for years.
No, no, just keep it on the case, okay? Nothing personal, just keep it on the case, okay?
Good.
Because we try to keep all personalities and personal stuff out of this and keep it purely on the issues and the zoning violations.
All right, as far as, yeah, the violations and the zoning, there is a neighbor who lives directly across the street, Dr. Theodore Chopoff. He wanted to come today, as did David Cabral and several other neighbors, but they can't get out of work at this time. But he stated very eloquently, I thought, the reasons for us, abutters and neighbors. He said, "I am one of the abutters living directly across from 709 VFW Parkway in West Roxbury. I grew up and currently reside at 347 Corey Street, West Roxbury, after having spent some time away in various places pursuing my education required by my career. I am strongly against the conversion of the current office space to retail space. Traffic has increased heavily since the time my family first moved here in the late 1970s. The backup of traffic is often well up the hill, up to Corey Street, up to the cemeteries, interfering with our ability to even exit our driveway during rush hours. A change to retail space of the property at 709 VFW Parkway will add to that congestion. Traffic flow in that corner used to result in many accidents when there was a retail space there as far back as the 1980s. Accidents at the intersection of the VFW Parkway and Corey Street are now few and far between. A retail space at 709 VFW Parkway would increase the likelihood of future accidents, and parking would become more limited, as there is also a busy dentist office directly across the street with multiple cars, and directly across on the corner, there's a gas station that takes up a ton of parking. There are two monument companies at the corner of La Grange Street and VFW Parkway, an intersection that still has numerous accidents. And the zoning for 709 VFW Parkway, if the zoning for 709 VFW Parkway were changed to retail, there would be three monument companies within the zone of consecutive traffic lights. Furthermore, that space would permanently be zoned as retail with unknown consequences in the future. I oppose the changing of the zoning. Please keep my precious neighborhood livable. Sincerely, Dr. Teddy Chopoff."
Thank you, thank you. Please have a seat.
Uh, I had a few more things.
No, 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 have a seat. We can't, we can't be, we get the gist, so-
Well, I mean, in my defense, no.
Have a seat, please. Okay, so, we've had, we have a slew of information. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to deny.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I too am in support of that motion, so it's been denied. Thank you.
Going to go back to a case I called earlier?
Yes.
Calling case BOA 961-962, 110 Mont Pleasant Avenue. This is a change of argument from a single family to a three-family dwelling in Renovate. Proposed side addition, new decks and egress stairs, proposed full off-street parking. Violation to Article 50, Section 29, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking loading requirement. The location, off-street parking shall not be located in any part of the front yard. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Falcini, Penn Forbes Road and Braintree. With me this afternoon is Dave France, who's the owner, developer of this proposed project.
Violates Article 50, Section 29, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking loading requirement. The location, off-street parking shall not be located in any part of the front yard. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Felchini, Ken Forbes' Road and Braintree. With me this afternoon is Dave France, who's the owner, developer of this proposed project. So 110 Mount Pleasant, the zoning in this neighborhood, Madam Chair, is three-family, 4,000. The proposal, as you can see from the turned-on letter, is to change occupancy from a single family to a three-family with four off-street parking spaces. The lot size is 6,303 square feet.
Sorry, 6,303?
Yes, but in the full disclosure, so the zoning is 3,000 or 4,000, which means 4,000 for one or two units and then 2,000 for the additional units.
Exactly.
Okay. As the lot size is 6,303, the violations it has, we just read with rear yard required at 17, we're at 4.9, and parking. We would allege, or state that parking is not because it's in the side yard as opposed to the rear yard. If you look at the plans that were submitted, you'll see that the front yard is actually the other direction.
Which sheet should I look at?
You can see on the second sheet, which is A01, and you see the brown walkway that goes down. That's an existing walkway.
Yeah.
So the access, that is actually the front door. And you can see that the parking is on the side, not on the front.
So where, so, so this gray area here, this brownish-gray that ups to Mount Pleasant Ave, is that the parking?
Correct, that's the parking. So you'll see two...
And where's the front door?
The front door is where the, where the brown line there, where that enters the building.
Oh, so, okay, so the front yard is really on the other side of the building?
Correct. It actually, it's kind of a unique situation because Mount Pleasant turns around, it hooks around, so you're on Mount Pleasant. They're both Mount Pleasant addresses, but the front is there.
Okay.
So there were only two violations. We would allege, state that the parking isn't a violation. This did go through, oh, just getting to the unit sizes. Unit one is 1,183 square feet, two bedroom, two bath. Unit two, 1,179 square feet, two bedroom, two bath. And unit three is 1269 square feet, two bedroom, two baths. Went through a lengthy community process, culminating with a letter which I provided the board from the Mount Pleasant Forest and Vine Neighborhood Association, which gave enthusiastic support. I've also provided the board with 22 letters of support from butters.
Okay, so, and the curb cut is existing?
Correct.
Okay, and this is interior conversion? Are you adding any space to this?
We're adding, it's building up, it's making, so the building, it still complies with, it's below FAR requirements, is below the height requirement, it conforms with everything except for those two violations, one of which, again, parking is in the side yard.
Essentially adding a floor, what are you doing?
Correct.
And if it's 3,000 or 4,000, oh, yeah, it's, but it's a three-up district, so is it...
It's in a lot of use.
I understand, no, what I'm asking is, what is the height? Is it 35 feet?
Yeah, so the zoning in the neighborhood is three stories, 35 feet, and we comply with...
Three stories, so it is 35 feet?
Yes.
Okay. How are the plans?
Okay.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and we'd like to go on record to support the project. We held in a butters meeting on June 4th. They also met with the Mount Pleasant Forest and Vine Neighborhood Association on several occasions. They were enthusiastically in support of the project and happy that, with the craftsmanship and the positive renovations that they plan to make in the area.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
To approve BPDA design review.
There a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all cited.
Thank you very much.
Going to call the interpretation, calling BOA.
Let's hold off on the interpretation because I think somebody from ISD is supposed to be here. So why don't we go on with the recommendations and hearings until such time, please?
Is she here? Yes, she's here. Going to call into the record, calling BOA 957-741-55-HALL-STREET. This is a, the petitioner seeks the determination. Inspeccional Services Department aired initial permit. Name and address for the record, please.
Who's here on behalf of the petitioner?
Name and address for the record.
Are you here for the petitioner?
Yes.
And who's the representative for Hall, so the, so please, who owns Hall Street? Please come to the table.
We're talking about 55 Hall Street.
Okay, so will everybody at the table please put their name and addresses on the record and tell us who they represent?
I'll stop, Madam Chair. Good afternoon. Daniel Toscano from Drago and Toscano's Attorneys at Law, 15 Broad Street, Boston, Mass. 02109. To my immediate left, I represent Joseph Degangi, Urban Court Development, who is the owner of the property of 55 Hall Street.
Okay.
My name is Mike Benetti. I am the manager of EIM LLC, which owns the property of 59 Hall Street.
I'm sorry, so you spoke very fast for me. Your name again?
Michael Benetti.
Yeah.
Manager of EIM LLC.
EIM.
Yeah, which owns the property of 59 Hall Street.
Okay, and...
Good morning, Chairwoman. Kim Ty for Inspeccional Services. I'm the Assistant Commissioner of Plans and Zoning at 1010 Mass Ave.
Okay, so please tell us what the basis of your request for interpretation is?
So this case has been on front of this board on November 14, 2017, at which time Mr. Pisano can have strong armed meeting.
No, 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 I don't want any, I just need facts. What happened on November 17?
The fact is that by their own admission of the ISD, they failed to go through...
No, wait a second. On November 14th, this parcel was before us.
Yes.
What happened then?
Well, the claim was at the time that the...
Can you tell us what happened then?
Madam Chair, thank you. For the record, so Mr. Degangi purchased 55 Hall Street. He filed his long form application with ISD, and it was, a permit was issued as of right for a two-family residential dwelling. At some point, that, there was an appeal by Mr. Benetti.
So it was a two-family issue as of right?
As of right.
And what's the zoning district?
It's a multifamily residential dwelling.
Okay, it's an MFR.
Correct.
Okay, so, and therefore, one and two families are allowed as far as use as of right?
Correct.
Okay, and is this a basement unit? Is there anything...
It was not a basement unit. Unit one is the first floor and ground level, which is existing living space, and unit two would be the second floor and the third floor, which was existing space, so there was no building.
So it was all interior?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
At some point, Mr. Benetti filed an appeal stating that ISD aired an issuing the permit as of right.
Seventeen?
I don't remember the year and the date, but at some point, that was before this board for an interpretation. ISD was represented by the Plans Examiner, and ISD made a, the board actually made a decision that they issued the permit. And I can let Kim speak on that. Mr. Benetti then filed an appeal to Superior Court stating that the board, ISD aired an issuing the permit, part of that appeal stating that we failed to go through the design review process.
And so this was all internal? So did it need, did it need design review, design process if the work was internal?
After review, we didn't make a determination that it did need a design review component.
And what was that supposed to focus on?
The exterior facade only.
Okay.
And which would require a review by the BPDA design review team. So subsequently, the applicant filed for an amendment to address the exterior facade that was then sent to the BPDA. The BPDA then stamped it for design review approval and sent back to ISD, and subsequently we issued the amendment permit.
Okay, so you issued the permit?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Benetti?
Yes.
So after you appealed to Superior Court, what happened at Superior Court?
Trial's pending in February.
The trial's pending? So why are we here today, then?
Because when the ISD...
We've already made a decision in...
So this is a, this is a different appeal.
This is a different request for interpretation?
Correct.
This is for the exterior facade?
This is for the, because the BPDA failed to file, to file procedures in going through the small project review.
This is not subject to small project review?
Yes, it is.
It's not subject to small project review because it's...
It's in the NDOD, so technically, so...
That's what triggers it for design, okay? Okay, so...
Can I ask a question, Madam Chair? If you're saying it's a, the BPDA, something problematic, why is it coming before this board and not before the BPDA?
Because...
So you are actually requiring an interpretation that BPDA failed to do design review? What, clarify for me?
Since the PD, a failed to follow process, the ISD shouldn't issue the amended permit. And that is permit Alpha 940919.
Failed to follow process? Now tell us what the process is that they failed to follow.
Well, first of all, there was no application filed. There was no notice sent to any of the neighborhood council or other civil organization. And the project doesn't meet the architectural requirement by the, for the, what is it, the Freedom Trail overlay.
So in the NDOD, in the NDOD, is there a requirement for an application, for a notice, for an application or a notice?
Yes.
I'm not asking you.
Okay.
No, under small project review, it's a different process. And again, this is coming from Inspeccional Services. I would prefer to let BPDA speak to their own process with respect to their own jurisdiction. From ISD's perspective, though, however, because this was an NDOD overlay, that they were looking at the design component only and not as a small project review. From ISD's perspective, so long as it is stamped by BPDA, that BPDA has the authority to issue that approval for design review, and that is sufficient for ISD to issue a permit.
Counselor, in the North End zoning, because I honestly do not remember the requirements for NDODs in the North End. Is there a requirement for application and for notice?
For notice? I agree with ISD's interpretation. I think it says for the component part only. I don't know if BPDA has informed the civic association of the design review. In terms of the application, we did file an amended permit for, for the exterior of the property, so it's now brick and it's, and meets the aesthetics of the butters property and in the Freedom Trail District.
That's not the application I'm complaining about.
Jeff, can you please explain the...
So there is nothing in Article 54 about an application and notice. That's in Article 80 of the zoning code, so, and there is no physical application.
Okay.
There never has been since Article 80 has been adopted since 1996.
Yeah.
So in terms of an application being filed, there just isn't one. There is a requirement under Article 80 that notice be sent to the civic groups, the local neighborhood groups, so that they are allowed to comment. Whether or not that was done, I don't know. But that is something that is also discussed within the lawsuit that's pending before Superior Court now. So that will play out through the court system. But in terms of an application, none exists.
That is an incorrect statement.
Okay, so now, everybody has given us their, their piece of it. Can you give us very specifics, then, on how this failed to, and just, you know, no sidebar comments?
I just did, I just...
Just be factual and tell us...
The factual is that no civic organization were notified.
Okay.
And the statement that he just made about this is not part of the lawsuit, the current lawsuit, but it will be if, depending what the board will decide.
Is that a threat?
No, I'm just stating the facts.
Okay, okay. Any further comments?
The only thing I can add, Madam Chair, members of the board, and I think Mr. Benetti just summed it up, I say, I think what he wants this board to do is make a decision so he can file a new appeal with Superior Court, Madam Chair. This is already pending before the court. I don't, with all due respect to the board, I don't believe that this board has actually jurisdiction over it because it is a BPDA design review that he's questioning. So with that said, I think that's...
He's making an assumption that...
Okay, so I, I think I need to close this because, and I need, because there has not been enough evidence presented here today that there has been a failure of BPDA to make, to follow process. And it's incumbent when any interpretation comes before us for the person who files a request for the interpretation to come in with details. And I don't see anything, I've gone through the files, I don't see anything there. So may I have, may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion that the board concludes that ISD did not air in issuing the permit.
May I have a second?
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I, too, am in support, so that, that is the statement, and we'll close the interpretation. We will now move to the, we will now move to the next part of the hearing, which is the recommendations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll call the recommendations of the hearing. We had a meeting on Thursday. Thursday, October 17th, down at 1010 Mass Ave, fifth floor. So I'm going to call these into the record, and at the end, we need a motion from the full board. Case BOA 961-698-59 WHITE STREET was a 12-by-14-by-11-inch addition to the third story, which was approved. Case BOA 985-029-31 PROSPECT STREET was an adder roof deck and stairway headhouse. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 997-852-9 INGLANSIDE STREET was extended living space to build in basement, spaced three bedrooms, one full bath. It was approved. Case BOA 995-563-332 SAVIN HILL AVE. It was the altering an existing peak dormer, extending, creating a shed dormer, was approved with BPDA. BOA 992-086-51 CHARLETT STREET was a change of occupancy from one, one to two family with living space in the basement. It was approved. Case BOA 976-954-48 MURRY HILL ROAD was a single-family dwelling, installed a new driveway and two off-street parking. It was approved with BPDA with no front yard parking, and they replaced a tree by owner's cost, at owner's cost. Case BOA 967-352-1587 CENTER STREET. It was extended living area to the basement, was approved. BOA 982-876-57 DEN STREET was remove the rear porch and add a mudroom, it was approved. Case BOA 965-584-34 LINETT STREET. It was added driveway with off-street parking, it was approved. BOA 963-024-111 MAPLE STREET. It was erected vertical addition to the top of an existing garage, it was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 978-421-59 PENFIELD STREET. It was a finished basement, built a new office, playroom, and bathroom. It was approved. Need a motion for approval. Motion approved the recommendations.
There a second?
Sir?
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion clear. The meeting is now adjourned.